I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council regular meeting for today, Monday, January 23rd, 2023, and I ask the clerk to do roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I invite everyone that on Facebook and in the audience to rise and say the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, question for the city attorney. At the last meeting, we, council voted to reconvene the ZBA on January 23rd tonight, but the, for the BP sign variance, but they're not here tonight. So do we need to open the ZBA to reconvene it again?
We continued it to a date certain.
Yes.
So yeah, I would recommend at some point this evening convening as a ZBA, maybe adding it to the end of the agenda, convening as a ZBA acknowledged that that item, unless anyone's here this evening for the ZBA request.
Right. And then, and then we can, we can make a motion to just open end it.
Or I think it's gonna be.
Be February, but just in case. So we don't have to, okay. So can we, can I make a motion to add it as, I guess, after the action request?
Second.
Opening the ZBA? Yep.
That's fine. So under F.
Well, it's a separate section, so after F, yeah.
And then can I make a recommendation?
One, one moment, you have to finish the first motion.
Oh.
So your approval with the exception of?
Well, I think there's, what Councilwoman Canes is potentially another amendment. So I would collect them all first and then make one.
Isn't it for the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Could we move a public comment, given the large audience, to just prior to us leaving for the closed session, so that these people have an opportunity to speak, rather than wait for us? I don't know how long those closed sessions are going to run. So moving number 13, public comment, to maybe number eight, and then move everything else down.
Under E?
You mean nine?
Before we close.
Before closed session.
Oh, yeah, eight, so eight E. Or the alternative would be that to allow the public, the first public comment session to include items not necessarily limited to the agenda.
Oh, that's fine. That's even better.
Yeah, but then they want them to have an opportunity to talk about anything that we go over if they wanted to.
You can leave the other one, but give them the opportunity, if they wanted to address something and not have to wait till the end of the meeting. So leave the agenda as it is, but amend it to the extent that you'll allow public comment on any issue if the first option, as well as the second.
All right. So I'll add that to my motion to allow public comment, the first public comment to be on any topic.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
But people do need to know, we still will be holding a public hearing on the sidewalks and that kind of stuff. So if they want to speak about that, should they speak at that time?
So if, yeah, the, the public hearing with respect to the delinquent sidewalk assessments, ditch and culvert, or nuisance cuts, if there's anyone here to speak to those topics, those comments can be made during the public hearing. You can also make them during the public comment section, but they're most appropriate during that public hearing.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next will be public comments for all items, and speakers are limited to three minutes. And just to reiterate the beginning of the address in the city council, please adhere to that. Is there anyone that, oh, and then like what we were just discussing, is that if you're here for the special assessment, there is a public hearing, which is under 7A, that that's where you can be heard. But please understand, if you want to be heard earlier, then just come to the microphone. So, public comment is open for anything that is on the agenda, or whatever your heart desires for three minutes.
I don't think I can get over there.
Only reason, because I won't be able to hear you on Zoom. So I apologize. Maybe you can even move that microphone, but I don't really screen up either. And you only, it's up to you. If you want to give your name, it'll be nice. You don't have to give your address, though, unless you just want to.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Mayfield, and I attended several of the city council meetings last year, and I watched most of them on Zoom. And I had a question, since this is a new year, and I noticed that in the city council meetings last year, there seemed to be a lot of confusion. And I'm just wondering, are there any classes that are provided for city council members? And is there any continuation classes that can go on for how to run the city council meetings? And could we see that everybody please attend those meetings, those classes, if there are?
So I'm going to jump in here right now, only because you all have moved the public comment stuff. So that's what I want to ask about, because, that's why I'm asking the attorney. So when it comes to questions that need to be answered, we don't have our mayor and council comments until all the way to the end.
Yeah, if you're, if I, if you're asking me if you can also move your mayor and council comments up, I'd recommend keeping those at the end of the meeting. So just for anyone in the public, if you are asking a question, you may not, you may or may not get an answer this evening. And if you are going to get an answer this evening from a member of council, it probably won't come until the end of the meeting. Again, for public, if you, if you're, you don't want to wait around, because we do anticipate tonight's going to be a longer than normal meeting, leave your email address or some other form of contact, and council can reach out to you.
Or forward it through the Zoom, and you can see what the answer was. But I have it written down. On just, okay, thank you. And just for a reiteration for the public comment, is that it's your public comment, but there's not a dialogue between the council and your public comments. So that's just to kind of piggyback off of what the city attorney said.
Greetings, all. I am a 30-plus-year resident of the wonderful city of Lathrow Village, and I want to share some information about the retention tank. I know you guys have hired a code enforcement officer, but my comments are related to city property, and hoping that the same enforcement would take place on the city properties as necessary. I gave you guys a copy of this, because I've been told that I can't use the electronics so that the audience can see. So I'm going to try to refer, and I'll be quick. I have three actionable items, actually. And I've talked to Susan, I've met with Susan, I've met, I think with all the city managers over time. Jeff, Jeff Mueller and I, we were quite close. But since he's retired, I will say that I've struggled to get action related to this. So I'm going to mention these items, and then try to share the pictures. I'm not as great with the camera as I'd like to be, but I did as best as I could. So the three actionable items, I've got one about maintaining those ditches that roll into the water retention tank there on Rainbow Circle. They have filled in tremendously. I fight with the people from Evergreen that do that grass over there constantly. I catch them out there illegally dumping, and I run out there. My, my kids keep telling me, you need to stop doing that. But, you know, I don't want to look at that mess, right? And then also, there's illegal dumping going on on our side. People toss, and I take my little stuff out, and I clean it up, because I like the area to look nice. But I've also talked quite a bit since 2000. I started writing to you guys in 2019 because of the lack of response I began to get, about the overgrowing of the fragmites, which are an invasive species, and how they grow over into the street, making that turn right there quite dangerous, because when you, especially these young kids that are driving, they come around that turn, they can't see what's on the other side. And so literally trucks and whatnot are beginning to roll over, and I'll show you that in the pictures. But the actionable item would be controlling the growth of the vines and whatnot. It looks terrible. Also, people have stopped and told me they're afraid to walk through there. We have coyotes, we have skunk, we have the possums, you name it, we have it over there. And then when you're walking through there, and you can't see past that foliage, you don't know what's going to jump out at you. So people are afraid to walk over there now. And it's been an area where walkers have always come. And then also, just maintaining the depth of those ditches, because what's happening is, now that the, they've filled in with foliage, the water no longer goes into the ditches. It comes out into the street. And what happens is that it comes over to my side of the street. I find that I'm having to have my people dig my ditch more often, because when the water fills in, it's moving my dirt on my land, right? So the cost to me is increasing. And so those ditches need to be dug back out, so the water can flow to and from that tank.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy.
Am I out of time?
Yes.
Okay, so can I ask that you guys review this? Because the cost to me is becoming tremendous.
Ms. Lacy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. How do I follow up?
So I want to make sure, and I'm sorry, guys, this is something besides the situation that you sent to us on August 22nd?
I met with you on, yes.
Okay, so this is something different?
No, this is the same thing.
So this is continuation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure that we didn't, because I was trying to see, make sure that no one missed your email.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it?
So there's another public comment, if you would like to stay later, that you can continue then?
Okay. No, I mean, how do I follow up after this meeting? I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. To give me your, I have your information. And so I'm hoping that you have.
I have her information. I'll follow up with you, too.
And her email address.
Yep, I have all that.
I appreciate it. This is great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Andrews. I live on Rainbow Circle. And I'm up here about this road opening I had heard about, trying to open the road from Evergreen back throughout the neighborhood, which was closed when they built them houses and stuff. And we, as some people back there, haven't heard nothing about it, but I heard through the grapevine. And all these signatures on here is from the residents that live there, and they don't want it open. And another question from Mr. Cantor here, from when they first started this improvement bond, that we had taxes, had to do taxes on. My street was supposed to be done. It was cleared by the guy that y'all had to come out there and do them. It was taken off. And I haven't got an answer yet why it was taken off, and other streets that wasn't on it. And I still have the old sheet that I was supposed to be there. You have a copy of this?
You can give it to me.
No, I want to keep this. This is, I don't, this is the only copy I have.
I'll need to see it, if you can make a copy for me.
Is it in my presentation also?
Yes, it's in our presentation. But we just need, you know, we need the people, y'all guys need to stay in touch with the community. You don't realize, we paying the salary here, and you guys up, up on this board right here are supposed to be working for the residents. And Ms. Susan, the city manager, she do not return no phone calls. She do not return no phone calls. Susan, she called me trouble. I'm trouble when I'm writing. She called me trouble. But I deal with that, okay? I put it for the code and form. She didn't have a decency to respond to me or nothing, okay? She came from Hamtramck. I know that she came from Hamtramck, right? Hamtramck. She came from Hamtramck, Hollenford.
Suzie Stack, was it Hamtramck?
Hamtramck.
She came from Ashley Clausen.
Well, wait, wait.
She was in Hamtramck prior to that.
Right, she was in Hamtramck prior. I found that out. Plus, now, the code and form she brought in is one of her friends from Hamtramck. So what I'm seeing now, with this establishment here, it's an old boy thing now. If you know somebody, you get in. And you got 12 people downstairs for a community of about 1,400 houses and 4,000 people. 12 people downstairs are getting paid without taxpaying money, and we not getting nothing in return. I'm talking directly to my mayor.
Oh, I understand. Again, reiterating what I said earlier, is we're taking in the comments, and we have mayor comments at the end of the night. So if you want to hear my.
I'll come back to this, so I'll be able to speak to the guy that's going to do these streets, and find out what happened to our street.
Do you want to hear our comments later, or you want me to call you? You want me to email you?
Will you return my, will you call me?
Yeah.
You don't do like Susan. I give my phone number.
Well, come over here and give me your phone number. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Okay, I just had a couple of items that I would like to bring up tonight. First of all, I am on the corner of what I in Bloomfield. Bloomfield has become a racing city. They do not stop at the stop signs. I am literally waiting for someone to park their car in my living room, because they don't stop. Those stop signs are non-avoided. I have called. Sometime the police will come, and they will sit there. But of course, once they see the police cars, they slow down. So I don't know if we need to put speed bumps down Bloomfield or something, because, you know, we have a very safe neighborhood. There's a lot of heavy trucks that are coming down Bloomfield. We have recently redone our roads. Those trucks are going to tear up our roads that we have just paid money to rebuild. I don't know if we need to have signs put on 12 mile, because all of a sudden, we're getting more traffic coming down Bloomfield than ever before. It's almost like it's the shortcut, and they literally zoom down Bloomfield. And it's very dangerous for kids, for walkers, for anyone. They don't stop coming down Bloomfield. That's one issue. The second issue is the sidewalk assessment. I would hope in the future that the city of Lathrow would take in consideration, that as far as the assessment for the sidewalks, sidewalks, blocks that I had replaced were based because on the fact that they were tree roots that literally rose up the sidewalk. Those trees are property of Lathrow, not my property. So I would think that at least the city will at least go in half, because my, my concern is, when they dug up the roots, that's fine for right now, but guess what? Roots are going to continue to grow, which means it's going to happen again, which means, means I'm going to have to continue to pay this. And I don't think it's fair for the residents to be accountable for the full cost of the replacement of the slabs, knowing that those trees are not our property. They're a part of the city's property. So I would hope that some type of way that the city would take in consideration, that at least go in half, because most of the slabs that I had replaced were because of tree logs. So once those trees raise up those blocks of cement, the next one is going to have a damage. You get rain, ice, it's just going to continue. So we're going, this is not going to stop. It's going to be a continuation. So I'm hoping someone would kind of at least take in consideration as far as the cost that is costing the residents. Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard now?
My name is Jason Hammond, 19-year resident of the city of Lathrow Village. What I hear a lot in the city, and also very clearly here today, is that communication continues to be a challenge within the city. And I have several times over the course of the last year, requested that the city council and the city administration consider putting together a formal communication plan for the city. I did a little bit of research. There actually happens to be a document on the city's website that talks about how communication between this city through things like social media and other services should occur. I feel like the plan should be more specific, and that it should include things like, how off, how long should you have to wait to get a response? And what are the methods of recourse if you're not getting a response? And what are the responsibilities for the city in terms of being proactive about communication? And what methods of communication are approved for the city to communicate to residents, and which ones are not approved or authorized for communication to residents? And I've been asking for this on and off over the course of the year, and I, I'm just reiterating and encouraging the city to please put some effort into putting together some sort of a plan, so that people, residents and business owners can both understand what they can expect out of the city in terms of responsiveness and proactivity from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to be heard? So I would like to close the public comment. And before we go into the consent agenda, I see that our Congresswoman is here. And if you would like to just come up and, yeah, you.
No, thank you so much to the mayor and the council members. I'm just here to listen. I am honored to be able to represent all of you in the United States Congress, looking for the partnership. Already have a meeting set up with the mayor, and have an open door policy. If any of you would like to sit down with me, including my residents, please let me know. We are opening a neighborhood service center at the, in Southfield, on Berg Road. It's the old Simmons Farmhouse. I'll make sure to get that information out to all of you. But getting you through everyday challenges and issues is going to go hand in hand with the policy work. I love using the power of our letterhead, the power to convene, to making sure that you get the resources that you need. So I'm just here again to listen. And again, thank you so much to the mayor for, you know, just a great relationship so far in around the issues that we worked on before. But I'm looking forward to representing all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. If you can take these sidewalk assessment bills and get. That would be real helpful. Moving on to the consent agenda, everything under the consent agenda is considered to be routine and non-controversial. So I'll take the approval, excuse me, the motion to approve the consent agenda, or if there's anything that needs to be moved out of it. Pardon me?
I do want to pull something, make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Pulling A.
So you want to make a motion to, you want to pull something before we make the motion? Okay, so that's not what you want to pull.
A. Minutes, approval of minutes.
Okay. Is there anything else that anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda?
I would also like to pull C and F, just to make a comment.
Is there, anything else that needs to be pulled out of the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, D and F, I apologize, not C. D and F. Not C, yeah, sorry.
So it'll be A, D, and F?
Yes.
Second.
That was a motion that you gave, Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion on that needed? Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Yep, okay. I pulled the minutes from our January 9th study session. I'd like to go to page 14, section D. We spoke about communications, parks, and rec job combination. And it said, council agreed that it's, Montenegro explained to council, there is a need for a communication parks and recreation coordinator, and council agreed that it's a good idea. Administrator Montenegro will gather job descriptions from other communities to get the full scope of the communication parks and recreation coordinator qualifications. I had tried to talk about this at that meeting, and I would like to go over a few things right now about this position in January 2021.
Excuse me one second. Is this the appropriate place to do that, though? Because this is on the correctness of the minutes, not opening up new topics on what was talked about at that meeting. Is that correct, city attorney?
If there's an addition to what was discussed up there, that, something that was discussed that's not reflected in the minutes, then it should be, the minutes should be updated to appropriately reflect that. But if it's a new discussion, a new information, then it should be added as an action, action request.
Later or at this point?
Or at some, some point.
Okay. Well, I did bring up the fact that the DDA Parks and Recreation Manager Position was created in 2021 to do things like Urtown, to handle events for parks and recreation. And then in September of 2021.
Can I give you a pause again, just a point of, one is this addition. So when it comes to doing the, the minutes, it's for adding additional information, or to take some minutes out, I mean, take some information out? So I just trying to make sure that we're, that I'm clear, that this is not new discussion around what we talked about that's coming up, or is this going to be a correction?
Yes, in addition to the minutes.
Okay, so if it's addition.
As I said, council agreed that it's a good idea.
If it's an addition, a new discussion, then we need to hold back.
It's not a new discussion. It's addition to the minutes for something that was discussed.
That would be an additional discussion. So it's really, when it comes to doing the minutes, it's for the correction.
And I apologize. I wasn't present at that meeting. Was this information that was, was shared during that meeting?
I brought up the concern that we already have this position in place, and wondered why we were going to have another person hired to do what this position was supposed to be doing. And then I was told that was taken off the table. We couldn't talk about it. So I would like that reflected in, in the minutes.
And it, yeah, it sounds like it could be on a subsequent agenda for the social.
So you just want to reflect that she had further discussion for the DDA position?
It sounds like she wants to reflect the fact that she, she objected to this, and it's not listed on here. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So she's saying the minutes aren't accurate, and that's missing.
Additional information later.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just on D and F, we have two different reports tonight. We have an annual report from the police department, and we have an annual report from the DDA. And I would like to request in the future, that when we have something like that, that that's presented at our council meeting by the different groups, so that the community can have, you know, can see what happened with the police department over the last year, and what happened with the DDA over the last year. I think that would be valuable information to share with people, rather than just putting it in the consent agenda where we don't even discuss it.
I agree with you.
Duly noted. You all can make a action request to have that taken out of the consent agenda at any time, and have it where it's a part of the.
The regular agenda?
Yep.
Okay. And are you talking just for clarification for the annual meetings, for their reports for?
Yes, the annual reports.
Okay, all right.
But not the, not the monthly?
Not the regular ones, just the annual.
Monthly is in there. People have access, but I just think it would be a good idea to, again, present to our community who we are here for, what has happened, and where their tax dollars are going, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, anyway.
I'm not really sure why the DDA annual report is under the consent agenda now that, just kind of thinking about it. But.
I mean, we can't do it tonight, because they're not here, so.
So if we can put the 2022 DDA annual report, we can just revisit it in February?
Okay.
Did you hear that, Sue?
Annual police report?
And that's a monthly report. It's not a.
No, there's an annual report.
The annual report is included in there.
So this also needs to reflect both that. It says annual and a monthly, and then put that on the February report also.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you. Nope, that's it.
I had some on the minutes as well. Page 14, this is, first, only bringing this up just because I, I'm on this page. But in the middle paragraph, it says, beginning with all, all not known city events, so it should be non-city events, third sentence in the middle. And then down in the infrastructure committee, that doesn't reflect the conversation accurately. So the mayor had initially asked if January was going to be the last meeting for the infrastructure committee. And the response was that the, we're finishing up the capital improvement bond work, and that there was going to be a meeting in January where we. that there was going to be a meeting in January where we expect that there possibly could be a recommendation. And if that's the case, there should be one more meeting to make the recommendation.
Got it.
All right, is there anything else? If not, you need to have a motion to approve those three things.
I'll make a motion to approve A, D, and F under the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in second, no further discussion needed. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, I'm assuming that the whole room is here for, is going to be for the opening of the public hearing for the special assessment. Role number 202201 for 2021, 2022 delinquent sidewalk, 2021, 2022 delinquent ditch and culvert, delinquent 2022 nuisance cuts. Same still holds true for the public hearing, still three minutes. And so whoever would like to be heard, you can come to the microphone. If it's something about damage, please make sure we have your address. Yeah.
So if you said it in here.
You're good.
Okay, I got more of them.
Okay.
How you doing? My name is Nashawn Robinson. I kind of spoke in there about some of the issues that we've had with the sidewalk. But I think I'll also share the sentiment of a lot of people here in that, I guess our bigger problem with the entire thing was, so we have a longer lot and we have four city trees.
I'm sorry, can you give your address again for me? Just so that I, there were a lot of you that spoke in there and I don't remember everything.
1-8221 Kilburny Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes. We have a longer front lot and so we have four city trees. Most of the concrete that was replaced was from three of the four of the trees where the damages from the roots pulled up the, you know, the concrete and it had to be replaced. And so I just think overall, like she said, it's unfair, I'm not going to say kind of unfair, it's unfair that we're going to continue having to pay for something that was not caused by damage that we did. We've only been in Lathrow Village since 2020 and it's been kind of disheartening a little bit since we've moved here because it's one thing after another. When we first got here, it was the water bill that was, everybody on the block swam on the front porch or something, I don't know. But it took us a while to get that fixed, that was fixed. And then a year later, our taxes doubled plus. And because our bill went straight to the mortgage company, we didn't know it at first. And so by the time that it got a chance for us to argue it or put it before you guys, we had missed that date or that window. And so our mortgage payment literally went up, went up $1,200. And so, and then now this, we have about $1,700 for a sidewalk that we didn't damage. And so I think, you know, I would hope that you guys would take a lot of that into consideration, especially since, like she said, this is something that's going to continue to happen. But we work hard for our money. We got a kid in college and one getting ready to go to college. And we don't have a lot of extra money to pay for other stuff. And so I really would hope that you guys are holding this hearing because you do want to hear the concerns, but not just hear the concerns, try to figure out how to fix it because we're coming out of money that we really don't have. Between the taxes and the sidewalk is crazy. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard?
Hello, my name is Rodrick Owens. And basically, I'm just going to piggyback off of what the young lady just said here. First of all, I have like 10 blocks that were replaced in front of my, the sidewalks there. And all of them was due to the tree damage. And I've come down here.
Can you give us your address?
1-8211 Ramsgate.
Thank you.
About, probably been about eight, nine years ago, you guys came and you cut down one of the trees that was there. And they're side by side. And at the time when you cut it down, I immediately came down and spoke with someone and said, you guys need to take this other tree out also. Because it was, it was, you could see the damage was starting to show up already. They came out several times and they said, well, the trees are dead, we can't do anything about it. I want to know what the responsibility of the city is far as the tree trimming. I know when they pulled up the concrete, they came and they cut the roots out then, which should have been something that was done prior to that. Maybe if you would have took two of the blocks out or three and maybe shaved those roots then, we wouldn't have, I wouldn't have had 10 of them all torn up there. So I need to know what's the city's responsibility far as the tree, just like the residents. If our responsibility is that front line to be maintained, I expect the trees to be maintained by the city, the roots and whatever. And not, these roots are so far up in my yard that, I took pictures, one that destroyed my sprinkler system. Second of all, the roots come up so far every other summer, I have to literally dig them out, replant seeds because they're coming up and they're coming up above the ground now. And it's, these are the same roots from the same trees. And I just haven't got, you know, I have a $1,700 bill just like she does. And I don't have kids in college, but I'm retiring pretty soon, maybe in two more years. So I'm going to be on fixed income, so I don't need all this additional money outside of the tax that we're paying. So those are, I've written to you guys and the only thing I got back was the ordinance. I feel like the ordinance itself kind of discriminates from homeowner to homeowner. I went and I took pictures of one street that has no trees on that side of the street and it is not one block that had to be repaired down there. Then when you go on the other side where the trees are, or the city tree, that's where all the repairs are. So if these people over here will never have to pay $1,700 because they don't have the trees to deal with, then it's people in the city that doesn't even have sidewalks that they will ever have to deal with the price of pennies fees.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. And me answering it, yeah. Anything else for the public hearing? Anyone else?
Can I speak as a resident?
No.
What do you mean, no?
You can, because you're a councilwoman right now, you're not a resident right now.
But it's a public hearing. And I have an assessment.
Ma'am, you can come to the microphone.
Hello? I'm Patricia Collins. I live at 28717 Blackstone Drive. And my, I think everything has been settled with my sidewalk assessment. However, my biggest problem is that I was never sent the assessment. I had to inquire about it. And I was sent first just this, it's a reassessment. And I had to ask them for them to send a breakout of what they're charging me for. But I paid it. It was paid January 20th because I only got this stuff in January. And I just want to make sure it doesn't go on my property taxes.
Do you have her address right?
I do, and we will double check all of those. These have been printed since the last meeting. So all of this, or since the public, this is the public hearing, but since we put that together. So this will be all looked at again tomorrow morning to make sure that the correct addresses are on that.
Okay, because I have paid in full.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So when you're, and then I, City Attorney, that's up to you. But when you're acting as a city councilperson, you're sitting on the dais as a city councilperson.
Your function is a, as a city councilperson, if, are you protesting a special assessment? Then, okay, then if you're subject to a special assessment and you're protesting that at the public hearing, you can.
Go over there.
Go over there and speak as. For your public assessment, it's for the special assessment because it's a requirement in order to petition.
I'm just, it's fine.
Karen Miller, 1-8755 Glenwood Boulevard. I just want to say I do agree with a lot of the residents that are here tonight. It was a very, very aggressive sidewalk program. It, it is disturbing to see the serenity of our community disrupted by all these white spots everywhere. I think there were a lot of things that were replaced that didn't need to be. And the biggest piece was the lack of communication with residents about those things. So I live on Glenwood and there were five residences that had asphalt driveways. And we were forced to have our driveways dug up and sidewalk blocks put in where they had never been. I've been here for 32 years and prior to that, the driveway was asphalt. There was no process to appeal and I'm not sure if that's happened to other residents. I think that's something that needs to be handled. And then if you, when an ordinance is passed, a property can become non-conforming because it doesn't meet the ordinance. But that doesn't mean that you have to follow the ordinance. You're grandfathered in until you make changes yourself to, to those things. The sidewalks were marked in March. Our driveways were all of a sudden marked in June. I don't have any idea why. We did, as neighbors, write an appeal, wasn't a safety hazard, hazard, asphalt is more porous than cement. We thought it was a waste of natural and personal resources. But again, there wasn't an opportunity to have a conversation about it and try and negotiate or work things out. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem, when we did the first sidewalk program in 2002, I chose to replace all of the sidewalk in front of my house. And at that point, the ordinance was in place, but there was no requirement to tear up my driveway. My issue now is that there is water sitting on the driveway. When I did bring that to the attention of the city administrator, she sent me a picture of my driveway from November of 2021. Don't know where that came from. It did have water on the driveway, but we thought our road was being fixed last summer. It was on the list, it was approved, and then it was taken off. So we did not have time to do anything about resealing the driveway or anything. The problem is now, they dug it up, there's cement there, the cement is sinking and the water is just sitting on there. I'm afraid someone's going to fall if it's icy. And I don't even know how I can fix it now because if it was asphalt.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is there anyone else for the public hearing?
A very brief comment, that something that Karen just said made me think of this. My name's Jonathan Terra. I reside at 27605 California Drive Southwest. One thing I noticed, I only had one square replaced, but I noticed how much it stands out in contrast to the existing aggregate concrete. So this is just a flat, white concrete. I don't know if there was an option provided to do it in a matching style or if that might be done in the future. And that's it, other than I'd like to pay my bill because before I become a black sheep. Anyway, just wonder if that ever came up, the matching the style? And maybe in the future, it can at least be made an option, you know, if you want to pay to have it match. And it'd be great if they all matched. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for the public hearing? So I'm going to close the public hearing and we're going to go into the action requests. I think that you probably should, if it's possible, to postpone and either have a special meeting to, I mean, we have a lot of issues from what I'm hearing. And I'm hesitant, I mean, and I'm asking, I'm hesitant about moving forward to make it as a delinquency until some of these things are ironed out. So I mean, I'm just, it's a question that I'm asking on what to.
Yeah, could we like put it on a study session?
Well, it can't be on the study session because we have to vote on it, so a special meeting.
Well, I meant like to have, you had a special meeting, okay.
Do you have a date in mind that you would like to discuss?
I mean, first, doing first steps, can it be done? Or can we do that to postpone it? So that's my first question.
I don't know ordinance wise, where we're at.
Timing wise of this, so this is the process, again, this is the process that, because the city turns over all of its delinquent water bills, nuisance cuts, any sort of improvement projects to the county. The county, there's, it's a time sensitive issue. The county then transmits the funds to make the city whole for these. And then the county is the one that will then pursue collection of the delinquent funds. So if you're going to delay the process.
And I'm saying delaying it like to sometime, I don't even know what day it is, today's Monday. So sometime either, you know, within the time limit to post the actual meeting, like in the next week?
I guess the question is at this point.
What's the county's timeline?
Well, not only the timeline, but what, I mean, what is council going to do differently? Are we going to remove? Are we going to retroactively?
My issue is that you have a couple of people that said that they've already paid the bill, right? And so making sure that they come off of that role, you know, ensuring before it goes to the county that it goes off, comes off that role instead of someone having to fight with the county, you know, for delinquencies when we can be proactive and like remove them from the role now.
I think that that would be appropriate and that, and I know the treasurer is not present right now, but that's normally, before it gets transmitted, they, any individual that's on that list has until February 28th to either.
Make payments.
Make a payment or verify that if they, in the case of the woman that had already paid it, on the 20th, to make sure that those payments have gone through and have, and that they are removed from the role. If I, if there is a desire by council to delay it, I would say, don't do it much more than a couple of weeks, just to confirm that.
Oh, for sure.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to be in a situation where time wise now, we are holding back the county from, from moving forward with their assessment collection.
Right.
Or the alternative, we miss it entirely and then the city's left carrying these costs for an entire year on their books.
Right, and as he stated, as the city attorney stated, this role will change once we get to February 28th. The final role is what will go. So this is, is the role that we're adopting at this moment, but that role will not be put on the taxes until, or the summer taxes until after February 28th. Because this, as people make payments on this and have their addresses removed, that will change.
But again, it goes on the taxes and not to the county.
I believe it goes to the, and again, this is the treasurer's realm, but I believe it gets transferred to the county and to be collected via taxes.
Yeah, but she said it goes on our summer taxes. That's what the letter that we received said will go on summer taxes.
But the payment wouldn't be made to Lathrow Village. The payment would be made to Oakland County.
No, I think it's made with your taxes.
But the, so the large, most of your, the money that comes in with your tax payment doesn't actually stay with the city. Some goes to the school board, a lot of it goes to the county. This would go to the county. The county would be collecting.
Right, but we would pay the city.
Up until February 28th?
No.
Yes.
No, it goes on our summer tax.
After February, after February 28th, you will have a leaning.
Right, so yes, if you were paying your summer taxes, you would write your check to the city. The funds wouldn't remain with the city, they would be reimbursed back to the county.
Right. And also, well, I don't have any to speak. There was a problem with people even getting letters because this last batch of letters that told about this meeting was resident with a tax, a parcel number.
There was a problem with people even getting letters because this last batch of letters that told about this meeting was resident with a tax, a parcel number. That looks like junk mail, so I don't even know how many people actually didn't even get their letters. So that's a, that's a big concern too.
Well, whenever something's for the actual property, it belongs to the property, not the actual residents. I know all of my stuff for the taxes come with the address and the parcel number on it.
My taxes come with my name, and the first letter came, the bill came with my name.
Okay, so what is the pleasure accounts, however you want to do it? So it's, I don't think that it should move forward until there's actually cleared up because it's too, it's too many people that have delinquencies. And I think that this is an oversight that I'm not comfortable with moving forward. But it's to the, everyone wants to make a motion.
Oh, you're going to make it, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to delay it. I'm not sure what, when is our next?
You would have to make a special.
You'd have to call a special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting. So just switch it to a motion to.
To set a special meeting? Do I have to set a date right now? Set a special meeting dependent upon the county deadline?
It would have to be a special meeting within the next two weeks.
You don't have to say that, she doesn't have to say the date, right? She can just say within the next two weeks.
So the, what I would suggest is if the inclination is by council not to act on this tonight, to table this to a date, well, a date to be determined for a special meeting within the next two to three weeks.
Okay, make a motion to table a, to a special meeting, and the date will be determined in the next, it will be held within the next couple of, or next few weeks.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm not clear on what delaying this buys us because, again, people have till February 28th to, to, if they, if they think there's a mistake, if there's a problem, they, you know, I'm just not sure what the delay buys us.
So.
Other than putting us at potential risk of, or, you know, forcing another meeting or putting us at potential risk of missing the county deadline.
Is there an avenue for anyone to even have any kind of adjustment?
I think that is out of good faith for the residents. If you have this many people that's coming in here to say that they're having some type of issue, especially if someone is saying that they paid for it, how many people didn't come and say, have a voice to say they paid for this already, and they're on the special role? And it's just to me that it would, it's in good faith in trying to clear people from that role. And sometimes it's not black and white. Sometimes it has to be gray.
Like with the water, that one giant water bill, just there's so many different pieces to it.
Any other, pardon me, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
No.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, the sidewalk repair program contract, SW 2023 extension.
Yep, I've asked Scott Ringler to come here and talk with us. I do have additional information for you guys that I will pass on down. Unfortunately, I put the wrong thing in the packet, and then I updated that this afternoon, so it is there. But if you'll take one, it's the actual letter.
I are dosing it too soon.
I'm sure. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Ringler with Giffords Webster. Before you tonight is a recommendation to extend the sidewalk contract for the third year, which will be the final year, to KD Cement. In 2021, they were the low bidder on the project, and in addition to 2021, we had two option years, excuse me. So 2022, which is what most of the residents are here for, was generally completed. We have a small punch list of work items to complete, and then our recommendation is to award KD Cement the 2023 second option year contract. And included in that, KD Cement has requested a 2% increase to their unit prices. I know it's, frankly, it's really not that much. I know people are giggling, but cement's gone up 17% in the last year, and they are eating a lot of that cost, so they respectfully asked for a small increase, so.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
So I would like to make the motion, but I think, I need some help here because I don't think we should be approving this tonight. I mean, considering the comments, the outpour of issues, I think we need to, the motion that I would suggest is going back to the table and finding three other bidders and see who's, who ends up being the lowest bidder.
So, you know, we wrote this contract, it is 100% Letherton Village City Council's option to exercise or not exercise the contract. If you don't exercise it, we'll put out a bid document and go out for bids. Probably going to take a little time to get. I can't guarantee you, but I think you're going to see higher prices. Cost of concrete's gone up significantly.
And would you anticipate, I mean, KD will obviously bid again, and would you anticipate a higher bid because concrete?
I would anticipate, I can guarantee it, of course.
Right.
You know, unit prices have gone up significantly since everyone knows inflation last year was pretty significant.
And you can see the differences in the contract bids that were put together previously. Those were the three lowest bidders, so there was anywhere from 171,000 or 172,000 to 244,000.
Well, I guess in good faith, like Kelly said, I think we should just give it a shot and see what we come back with. Just because of the concern of the cement company, I think we should at least give it a try. If they come back, if we have to, you know, just figure out a different option. Because I don't, this is just a bit much for us to just say, oh, yeah, give KD the contract, and that would just be like a slap in the face right now.
I mean, you know, in my opinion, KD did a pretty good job. They replaced a lot of sidewalk this year and the previous year. This year's went a lot better than 2021. 2021 had issues, not just with the city, but with our company and the contractor. It was the first year of the program. 2022 went a lot better.
So the actual material and the actual job, the replacement, I agree with you. The work to get to that point, I disagree with you immensely on that one. Only because, I mean, and I'm not going to, you know, go into what, being a resident, but I know personally that there were some issues there. And now to see that it wasn't isolated just to a few people, we had a lot of issues. And I have to agree, I'm hesitant on agreeing to give it to KD, but I do hear you on the fact of the prices coming, I mean, raising, going higher. To me, this might be something else, just a table instead of going back to bid. Because this, to me, does have to be a discussion more than what we have right now to discuss. Because I think this has to be, I prefer, if it was me making the motion, which I am not, to table it and not go back out to bid. But it needs to be, there's a lot that needs to be done first, and they need to make us whole in some of the things that they've done. I mean, these are like, maybe should be written to the contract also, that this needs to be taken care of. We also need to have supervision. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that we really need to talk about before even, for me, and how I feel about it personally.
I'd like to ask Scott, as the project managers for all of this, what will we see, would we see different from you? Because a lot of these things are cleanup things, you know, like.
Yeah, you know, it's difficult. Like I said, there was three or 400 houses that had worked on this year. It's a lot. Inspection costs can be significant. We pared that back. I have a resident out here that works for us. He stops probably two hours a day on the job, so it's not full-time, trying to save quite a bit of money. It's quite an expense. The one thing that I would like to see them do differently this year is not go back. And what I mean by that is when they start streets, they finish them. Because this year, they started some, they didn't do some driveways, we quantified things, found out they missed driveways, we had to redo it. So I've had that conversation with them about just trying to complete that street in its entirety instead of going back to do driveways. Driveways are a little more difficult to take out. They got a different crew that does that. That crew's not always here, so. There's a lot of, you know, going back to properties they'd already been to to finish work. I'd like to see that all finished at one time.
Again, just for, I think there needs to be further discussion with you.
That's fine.
In regards to the work and this, you know, about this contract, because if possible, to add some things, you know.
If I could add a suggestion, I don't, I don't see the ability to go back and adding additional requirements to their existing contract at the same rate. But I do think, I think it would be prudent as opposed to just declining the second-year option is to invite KD Cement to come to our, to our special meeting for the special assessment role and have them present to council. They, council can present to them the half dozen or so complaints that we've heard this evening about yet unfinished work or repair work that was done poorly or improperly, or their treatment of our residents in doing that process, and have them answer some questions as to how, how they can assure going forward, should they be, this option be picked up, that we won't have these problems in 2023.
Is KD responsible for the, for the, you know, putting things back in place or not?
Yeah, I mean, they're responsible to remove the sidewalk, pour the sidewalk, do the landscaping, repair irrigation. Irrigation's difficult. We chase our tails around out there trying to find them because, you know, they don't know where they're at. They're digging, they're removing sidewalks, and there's irrigation pipes next to it, and they're not marked. They can't see them, and then they have to fix them.
So we pay Giffords Webster 15% to 17% on a project. What does that include as far as managing those kinds of things?
That is all of that. It's doing the contract administration, it's field marking all the locations, it's quantifying the final work. That all goes into a GIS system that prepares actually the bills. It's mailing out the bills. Sometimes the city mails them out, sometimes we mail them out.
So.
It's material testing.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, I'm definitely sympathetic because, you know, in 2002 or whenever we did the last time, I had an issue with my sidewalk replacement. But the one thing I think is the fact that we have the public hearing tonight is obviously going to bring, bring out the complaints. So what I'd be interested in hearing from you is on other projects that you work on with other vendors, how does the experience that we had this summer and last summer differ from some of those other communities who have used other vendors? So is it similar? Is it, is this, is this markedly different than what you've experienced?
Similar to better. Not a great answer.
No, but that doesn't make, I don't think it makes anybody here feel better at all. I'm sorry.
It's production, it's production sidewalk. That's why you're getting such a great rate. This isn't specialty work. Somebody asked, you know, if you can match the cement. Yeah, you can. It's going to be really expensive.
Right.
You know, I think is what he's talking about is the older cement that, you know, back in the day, you didn't use white curing compound. You sprayed water on it every day to cure it, and now we spray them white, and that's what the white, the white is. It's curing compound, it's to help it cure.
Does that go away? Does it wear off or not?
Slightly. Still going to be discolored compared to the ones next to them. You know, different materials. We don't have the great natural materials we used to use 50, 60 years ago.
Yeah, but my question is more towards, I mean, yes, we have issues. There's no question, and we're going to have issues on any project. But we've got to look at from the overall for the whole city, and I don't want to, on the other hand, you know, I don't want to be short-sighted and cost the sidewalk program significantly more next year because we make a decision based on what we're hearing. And if you're saying it's similar to, or you said similar or better actually to what you've seen in other communities.
But that's not what I'm asking. I was asking to table it.
Another part of.
Which is fine. I mean, I have no problem tabling it, but I'm just, I wanted to ask the question.
I think that it needs to be tabled to the special meeting as in what city attorney said, and so it can be a further discussion at that time. So if someone will make a motion for.
But is that what you said though?
That.
Yeah, my recommendation was, or my suggestion, I guess, falls short of a recommendation, would be that if council's not inclined to pick up that option this evening, as opposed to declining the option and going out for bids, invite KD Cement to your special meeting, present them with the complaints and concerns that you have, and then ask them to detail what their plan, what their action plan for this summer's construction season, should you pick up that option, what their plan is to prevent or to reduce the number of instances that we've heard here tonight.
But I guess I'm asking for clarity because you keep saying not to decline it. So are you saying?
To table it.
I'm saying table.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you decline it this evening, what.
He's going to have to go back out to bid.
We're going to have to go back out to bid, and with inflation costs, the cost of materials alone, the likelihood that council will see the lowest bidder.
Lower than this.
Lower than this is pretty safe to say nonexistent. And I think you may end up, KD Cement may or may not bid again, you may end up with a different company. The first year that we utilized KD Cement, as Scott Ringler indicated, there were a lot of problems, logistic problems, that hopefully we've seen an improvement in that by bringing in a new contractor, you're going to have a whole new learning curve all over again. So that would be my suggestion, to get more assurances for your residents that, the ones that are going to be having their sidewalks disrupted next summer aren't going to be experiencing as many or the same type of problems that the residents have experienced last summer.
So I think there's needs to be a motion just to table it so we can get them to come back and have a further, and have a further discussion.
Make a request if we, if we table it?
Motion to table. So we need to make a motion to table this decision. And then we also would like to have them come to our special meeting to address concerns.
Is, so is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
It's moving in second. What's your discussion?
I just want to say, if we're going to table this, when we do come back, besides KD's plan, or KD, yeah, KD's plan, I would like to know what Giffords Webster's plan is to deal with some of this mess, and also a communication plan for the city, because we heard from many people tonight that no one was communicating, no one was in touch with them. I know personally, in the beginning, you know, there was no communication, and then, as we heard tonight, lack of follow-up for people who were trying to, you know, get answers and get help. So some kind of a plan for what, what the city's going to do to, so that next year, you know, we don't have a repeat of this year and last year.
So we need to come up with a communication plan that, you know, we can. So it's been, are you finished?
Yeah, I said if we can have those three things.
Yeah, just one, I know we said to the next special meeting, did we, well, actually, I'll leave that for now. We can talk about that later.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now we are moving on to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendments.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, we had the option at the study session prior to council meeting to go over the budget amendments. These are things that we do primarily to make sure that we're in line with the budgeted amounts in the fiscal year in making sure that we're not spending outside of the appropriations that council has approved. So we have come to you with amendments in the general fund, in the major and local streets fund, in the water fund, in the sewer fund, in the capital acquisitions expense fund, and unless there are any specific questions that council has on any of these items, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, but this is your first set of amendments for the budget year 2022 and 2023.
Someone would like to make a motion to accept, or a motion for approval of the fiscal year?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I just wanna make the same comment that I made earlier in the study session. You know, when you look at the, the budget amendments, if you, if you subtract out the things that are capital improvements that are being paid for through the capital improvement bond. The revenue increase offsets any expense increase. And we actually have an excess of revenue of about $20,000. So that's actually a good thing. So to this point, you know, we're, we're maintaining our budget and we're actually doing a little bit better than, than, than anticipated.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, next we have the DDA Board of Director appointments.
Okay, when the previous city administrator resigned from her position. Police Chief Scott McKee was appointed to be on the Board of Directors for the DDA to fill the vacancy. He has since indicated that he feels he has filled that position well and would like to put it back in the city administrator's list of responsibilities. And his last meeting that he was a part of was January 20th of 2023, so it was just this last Friday. So there's a recommendation before you that myself, as the city administrator, be appointed to fill that vacancy.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the city administrator Sue Montenegro to be appointed to fill the vacancy created by Police Chief McKee's resignation from the DDA Board of Directors.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yes, is that a voting position?
Yes, it is.
And, and why? I'm trying to wrap my arms around why that would be a voting position as a staff person.
Because I am appointed to the board as a board member rather than. The term escapes me, it's, it's the position in which it's appointed.
Cause there's a requirement for.
Rather than serving as a liaison.
Requirement for so many people to be business owners, so many people to be residents on that, on that board. Where does that fit? I thought I saw that Scott McKee was listed as a, in the business section, which that doesn't really represent the business community. So I'm just wondering where does that fit into that nine-member board?
I think he was listed as police chief. I don't think he was listed as a business owner, but I could be wrong on that, but.
I saw it previously.
This is just historically how things have been done, so this is the recommendation before you tonight.
So, any further discussion?
I do have a question, are there any other openings on the DDA right now?
There's one seat that's open, I think.
Oh, there is one.
I'll have to look it up, and actually we'll have to, I don't wanna misspeak, but I believe when I was in the meeting, there's one, but I, we'll have to talk to Suzy about that. I don't have.
And this is after filling, Susan.
You guys received the list of boards and commissions, so you can look at that, you got that.
Yep, I saw that, yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And I put this wrong. So now I. We are moving into a closed session. So what that means is that we would need to leave.
Do the ZBA.
Oh yeah, you were.
I think we're doing the ZBA.
We're doing it last, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing it at the end. So you have it under, you have it under the, what you put into record is under F, that's what I was asking you about, are you sure?
When I said after, when I said, I said after eight.
So you have it right there also.
Right, yes.
So we're going into a closed session.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're going into.
I need those, I need those reading lessons.
How long do you think you're gonna be gone? Should we go home or should we stick around?
But I, I, no, I cannot say how long it's gonna be. As I explained, what I'm about to explain, you might be able to understand that we are going into a closed session to do the six-month evaluation of the city administrator. I don't anticipate it being short at all. So I'll just give you that, that's all I can give you. So I would take a motion to close. Oh, go ahead.
So the most.
We have the others ready?
Yeah, so, but we'll come, we'll come back out of and then go back.
And then go back in.
It's up to, it's up to council how they wanna do it.
I prefer to close it for both of them so we don't have to move like.
So then, because going into a closed session requires a very specific motion, I would ask that. Well, you can explain to the audience that there are two reasons to go into a closed session, but specifically both would fall under Section 15.268A of the Open Meetings Act, and that would be the basis for the, the motion to go into closed session.
So that's your motion, remember that, of course.
Well, once we get to that point, we can all help you with that.
The comments that you give at the end, are they gonna be recorded on a Zoom so like if we go home, we can still see the comments?
Check back in through the Zoom, cause it'll be back on. I don't think we're even gonna take the Zoom down, there's no reason to take it down or just.
We won't take it down, we'll just.
So you can go home and all get it.
Yeah, and, and if it, for some reason it's not on Zoom, go on Facebook, it'll be streamed on Facebook.
Okay, so what would you like, how do you want us to do this?
So because council's going to enter closed session to consider or hear complaints brought against or to consider the person, the periodic personal evaluation of the city administrator. So pursuant to Section 15.268, subsection A of the Open Meetings Act. It's appropriate for council to go into closed session to have those discussions. And that request has been made by the subject of the, of, of that evaluation and to hear the complaints brought against that individual.
All right, so I'll make a motion to go.
I can't say that.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 15.268 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss employee issue as well as employee evaluation.
At the request of.
Yeah, at the, at the request of, of the, the individual employees.
Second.
It's moved in second, there is no discussion, is there? No discussion, so I also need to take a motion to close the meeting or the meeting stays.
The meeting stays.
Okay.
Council moves into closed.
Okay.
Doesn't require a vote?
I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry, I'm totally confused now.
Roll call, councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Okay, we need to have a motion to open up the, open meeting, to open the meeting.
There's no, there's no requirement that there be a formal motion to, the Open Meetings Act is silent on how you come back from a closed session, so. We're back. We're back.
But in, okay, so now we need to adjourn the council meeting and we need to adjourn for the ZBA.
So I'll make a motion to open up, to close this meeting and open up as, as the ZBA.
Second.
Roll call please.
I'm sorry. Board member Miller.
Yes.
Board member Garrett.
Yes.
Board member Jennings.
Yes.
Board member Cantor.
Yes.
Board member Canes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to table the BP signed variance and to reconvene at a later date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, we've been, it's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Board member Garrett.
Yes.
Board member Jennings.
Yes.
Board member Cantor.
Yes.
Board member Canes.
Yes.
Board member Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to close the ZBA and open back up the city council.
I'll make a motion to close the ZBA and open back up the city council.
Second.
So can second and roll call please. Do I have to do roll call still? One day I'm gonna remember this. No, thank you, okay. So we're back to city council. Next up was the city administrator's report.
You have the report in your packet, if you would like, I will go in-depth, otherwise I will let you read it at your leisure. You tell me which you prefer for us to read it. Just a few upcoming events, the town hall meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 6th at 6:00 PM. And it will be in the community room and it is to discuss potentially opening roads that have been closed here in Lathrop Village to aid in fire, police and ambulance to be able to respond quicker. So encourage people to come out to be able to talk about that.
Thank you. City administrator.
I mean, the city attorney, I'm looking at it and still.
I, I was gonna give you guys a, a real quick update. We did receive confirmation last week that the, the long, tenured litigation the city's been involved with, with three former police department employees appears to be at the end of the road. Officer Gorby, Officer Rucker and Ed Charabian had filed lawsuits against the city claiming, amongst other things, age discrimination. And their latest appeal to the, their last pending claim, which was in the Michigan Court of Appeals, has been. The Court of Appeals has issued a favorable opinion in favor of the city dismissing those claims. So there, there is still an opportunity for them to file a leave for, an application for leave to the Supreme Court for consideration. However, the likelihood that that Supreme Court would consider that is pretty small, given the, the nature of the claims are not. New areas of law are contradictory to existing legal standards, so that's a, that's a good news for the city. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Looked them over too fast. Reports of boards, commissions, committees, infrastructure committee.
Yeah, be real quick, we have an infrastructure meeting this Wednesday, January 25th at 6:00 PM. I invite everybody to attend. We'll be reviewing the summer of 2020 projects as well as where we stand on budgets. And so I hope people will, will attend.
Thank you, Parks and Rec Committee.
That would be me. And I just wanna invite everybody, and those who don't know, we are having a bingo night down in the community room on Friday night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. All ages welcome. Bring a food pantry item as your contribution and come in, bring your family, bring your friends, invite a neighbor. It's gonna be a community-wide event, hope you can all come. RSVP to Jaclyn if you can, just so I know roughly how many to set up for. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission.
Yeah, so we, at our last meeting, we received the as-built for the BP gas station, which the commission asked for to verify certain aspects of the project, including the, the tank locations for the underground storage tanks, the EV charging locations and, and some issues with the screen wall. And the Planning Commission was satisfied with the as-built and, and voted to approve and move on with the project.
Thank you, Simco.
No report.
South Public School Board.
No report.
Unfinished or new business.
Yeah, I have, I have a few, I'm gonna try to move through this quickly, but I don't wanna delay these till, till next meeting. So first off, I, I wanted to bring up the back billing program, just as a quick refresher. You know, Pam and I investigated some billing errors for some of our larger water customers and found about $130,000 worth of, of underbilling. About a year ago, council approved the back billing program. And as part of the documentation that was presented on that night, you know, we, we, we were, we received a listing of all of the properties with the, a number of units that were owed by each of those, those properties. And, and council on that night approved the, the program and they approved the, the rate to be charged as well as the terms. And I know I've, I've asked on, on several occasions through the last year about the status of that. And as far as I know today, to date, no bills have gone out and it should be a fairly straightforward process. So what I'm asking and hopefully have council support on, cause I'm only one person, so we have to agree on this. But I, I'd like to ask and set a due date for the February 6th study session to have those, those bills, bills out, which gives the staff two weeks to do that. So I wanted to see how council felt about that.
Oh, we're, we're going back seven years if, if possible or just the two?
Well, we, we approved, we approved all the parameters and I don't remember, I'd have to go back and look, but, but we, we approved all the parameters. And it just, what hasn't happened is, is the bills have not gone out. And we're sitting on, you know, I, I believe, if I remember correctly, people had either a year to pay, but if it was over a certain amount, we gave them an additional year. But, you know, so we're sitting on, we should, we should be sitting on $65,000 right now roughly and collecting interest on that and putting it in. It should be in our water and sewer department, so I just wanted to just give the administration a due date to make that happen.
And you wanna give them two weeks?
Two, two weeks, they should have all the information that they, they have, that they need. They have the number of units for each house, they have the number, the, the billing rate, it's multiplying the two numbers together and, and getting the, getting the bills out and the documentation to the individual.
Are they aware, are the people aware that this is coming or no, you don't know?
I, I'm gonna assume not.
Not, okay.
If it's doable, I mean, if, if it's doable in two weeks, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Everybody fine?
Is it residents and businesses or just?
Residents and businesses.
Can I put the caveat in there that if we find we can't do it in two weeks, that I communicate that to council and extend it out another week or two on top of that?
I'm fine with that.
I would say maybe once you get started and it looks like it's gonna be more tedious than it appears, and give us the heads up prior to.
Yeah.
The two, yeah, the two-week deadline.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, and then the second one was, was the WaterTech, our, no, we, the WaterTech RFP, I asked Sue about that, so that's actually, the RFP is in process for that. So that we can skip. Service line material, one of the, the major reasons why we made that recommendation is because we, we went a year without having, with it constantly getting pushed on, on the back burner because of other higher priorities. And so the, the recommendation was made to get that process going, to get the service line material identifications. If you remember, we do self-testing, but the, the self-testing response rate has been extremely poor. And so there, there were two, two prongs to that, that recommendation that we asked that would start immediately. One was to look at creative ways to get the self-testing done, because every self-test that we do saves the city probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 to $60. And when you multiply that times somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 homes, you know, you're talking a, a, a lot of money. And then the second part of that was that a contractor needed to be hired, go through the process of hiring a contractor, because we will have to go inside those people's homes. And again, you know, that was about two months ago, so I wanna make sure that, that, that process also gets started. And so I was hoping that, again, we can set some type of deadline like a month or so to have, you know, either an RFP or a, RFP out for a contractor or the contractor hired, however we, however we do that. So again, asking for council's opinion on, on a deadline for that.
What's the suggestion?
I'd say a month, I'm just throwing it out there, you guys may feel differently, but I, I just wanna see some progress on it.
So what is the, Sue, what is, you know? How long do you think it's gonna take you to get out?
An RFP for that, I don't think that will take as long because that one, there's lots of communities that have had to put that RFP out. The one on the technology side of it was a little, a little more finessing and tweaking that needs to be done to it. So this one, I think I can have back to you guys.
By our next meeting?
By the 27th of February, the next council meeting.
Okay, the other thing we, we talked about in, in October, when the audit was delivered, we had asked for the, a January response to the, the non-material weaknesses that were, were in there. So obviously we haven't gotten that, but hopefully we can get that for the next council meeting.
Okay. The what?
Okay, and then the, the last thing I have on my list. So, you know, we talked about encroachments a couple of months ago and, and for, for the year leading up to that, you know, I personally was hit by a lot of residents on, on encroachment issues, as was, was the city and we had asked, or the, the viewpoint then was that, that the city attorney, Suzy Stack and the planners would get together to talk about that and, and it didn't happen, so I, I kept pushing for it. And we had the meeting in October where we talked about it and then that got a little confusing and then it got. And then it got pulled from the next agenda. And the idea was to, again, convene that group, so bring a more comprehensive approach to council for our consideration. And so I just want to make sure that that's happening as well.
I thought the last, where we left it last was once the new code officer got brought up to speed. Because it's going to physically require going around and making observations. So that's where I thought we had left it.
Yeah, because I know the last email that I had gotten, because we had had a pre-meeting, and it was supposed to be on the agenda, and then it was taken off the agenda. And I'd asked why, and it was because we decided, because you, the two you decided to put it back.
It was passed on, we needed to go to the planner and to, yeah, internally work on that stuff. So that's what we're doing in bringing Bill on board is another part of that key component. So we are in that process, but...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's getting worked on and moving forward on it. And that is all I had for unfinished new business.
Jan, you got something for new business?
Well, yeah, well, actually, I'm not sure yet. At the January 9th meeting, this presented about creating a new position for communications and parks and rec. And at that meeting, I asked about the DDA Parks and Recreation Manager position. And told that was not, it was off the table, and that that wasn't the job. But anyway, I went back and looked. January 2021, there was a recommendation to restructure the part-time DDA Parks and Recreation Specialist position to create a full-time DDA and Special Projects Manager position. Salary adjustment from $15,000 to $30,000. Job description was compiling weekly e-newsletter, updating website and social media pages, administers a variety of special events and activities, elicits volunteer involvement and community participation, prepares various marketing and communication materials for the DDA and the city, coordinates designs and edits the Your Town newsletter and other community publications, manages and implements the update and redesign of city website. So in January of 2021, Cory was promoted to that position from her part-time position. In September 2021, there was a recommendation by Cheryl to do the DDA Special Projects Manager, expanded job duties. This is Cory taking on the event activities that were under Chris, increasing her salary to $42,000, with this being split $8,000 DDA, $4,000 city, coming from budget previously allocated for recreation salary. Bruce responded, please make sure you have a very tight introduction and explanation of the promotion for Cory, including how you got to the recommended $12,000 increase. While I have no issue with it, villagers and certain candidates are going to lose their minds and explode. A clear and detailed intro explanation might help calm things a bit. Then Kelly said, I 100% agree with being very detailed about Cory's promotion, but I'm sure you already knew that. In addition, would you also discuss why you are not backfilling Chris's position, which was the Parks and Rec position? Then in, there was a memo from Susie Stack to the DDA board saying that the special, DDA and Special Projects Manager will be taking on the planning and implementation of the many community events previously hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department. City council approved that September 27th, 2021. Additional duties will include serving as a department liaison for Parks and Recreation, managing volunteers, vendors, and planning community events. In December of 2021, there was a job posting for the DDA and Special Projects Manager after Cory put in a resignation. Basically, same job description, compiling, compiling weekly e-newsletter, updating website and social media pages, planning of community events, serves as the city's Parks and Recreation Liaison Officer, elicits volunteer involvement and community participation, prepares various marketing and communication materials for the DDA city, coordinates designs and edits the Your Town newsletter and other community publications, manages and implements the update and redesign of city website. There were a couple of memos that went out saying the position had been posted. May of 2022, there was a memo from Susie Stack to the DDA board that the position was filled by Brittany Dorsey. In their May 2022 report, it showed, there was a historical snapshot talking about this position taking over the events. And that the salary of the DDA and Special Projects Manager was $44,290. And then there were some emails that I had received from Cory when she was putting together the Your Town. So I know that she was, she was doing that. So my question is, this sounds exactly like what we were talking about doing and wondering why this position that was posted with all of these duties, why that isn't being done? And what, what does that position look like? If these key pieces are not supposed to, you know, supposed to be the position, but it is, so. So to come and ask for another...
I didn't know. Is that a question, or you just putting it in there?
No, I mean, I'm just, yeah. So, you know, why is there a need to hire another person when this job has been filled and it should be, should have been done since May?
I will have to look into that.
I can give you all of the, I've, I've got all of it. So when I tried to discuss this at that study session, I wasn't given the opportunity. So that's why I brought it here this evening. So anyway, see that there's a need to hire another, another person when, as I said, this was specifically created and the salary was raised to do these duties. And that's not happening.
Anything else? Anyone else have any unfinished or new business? Move to public comments. The speakers are limited to three minutes.
Lori Kuntz, I just have two comments regarding the Your Town on the pavement restructuring program. The map is not correct in many ways. And I wondered why an updated map wasn't printed out. This shows streets that have been, that are not paved, that have been paved, and it's just not correct. And the other thing I just wanted to address, Mayor Garrett. I wanted to address you specifically and say I wanted to apologize for my recent outbursts in the past. I've been dealing with some personal issues that I've been working on, and I may have been taking it out on you, and for that, I'm sorry. That's not who I am. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Brief comment. Jason Hammond, Lathir Village resident. I appreciate Councilwoman Miller bringing up the very detailed description of what was intended to be done with the Assistant DDA and Events and Communication position. That's information I did not know of, and I'm glad to have it now. I feel like that is a, the covering of that type of information could have been done with the city administrator outside of this meeting in order for communication to happen and investigation to happen and be presented both to council and to residents all in one sitting, so that, you know, there's an opportunity to figure out, all right, well, what was done in the past, what was defined in the past is what that position was supposed to be? And should the person in that position now still be responsible for the same responsibilities that were defined for Cory when she was in that position previously? So I'm hopeful, I don't know whether or not that conversation happened. I'm hopeful that it did happen. And that if it did happen, then the information should be able to be made available to all of us, so that we can understand what the parameters of that position are intended to be. And, sorry? Were you speaking over me? So that we understand who, the person in that position, what their responsibilities are, and if those actually include things like communication, events planning, and things like that. So I appreciate you bringing that up. And I'm hopeful that there's a clear communication to the city of what, the residents and the business owners of what that position is responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see that there's anybody that is on Zoom. So is there anyone in the hallway?
Just Cliff.
So I'll close public comments. And so for my comments, I accept your apology. I appreciate that. That was very, I know for a fact how it feels when you have a lot on your mind, and it does not appear that people take into account things that have happened. So I do appreciate it. And I hope that going forward, that we can have a better working relationship.
I would appreciate it, and thank you for acknowledging me.
Bye, Cliff.
I just think that I appreciate y'all telling me for another year. Thanks to Sue.
So, real quick, for Kathy Mayfield, there is a training. We could provide proof of completion, but that's not mandatory. But there are trainings for new elected officials, trainings throughout the year that, yes, we can go to. Mr. Andrews with the street closure, who I will call tomorrow also. I really encourage everybody that lives on Santa Rosa to come to the open or the town hall on February 6th. I really want everybody to really get the facts prior to making any... San Jose, what did I say?
It's Santa Rosa.
It's 12.
I get it.
Okay, so, so, sorry. Just to come to the town hall, so you can get full, all the information, because it was brought to the council. The council did not bring it up. It was from the South of Fire Department. And that's, let's go from there and see what happens and talk about it. Ms. Love about the speed bumps. Yeah, I think we've gone that way before. I know where Ms. Love lives, and I think even Ms. Kuntz can say that from Bloomfield Drive in Santa Barbara really needs to do something. And it might be where, and I know no one likes it, a lot of people don't like it, but maybe those many thoroughfares may have to get something to put on it, because you're here a blowback on how fast people are going on those, those streets. And I'm sure on Lathir Boulevard, too. Communication plan, we did discuss it, and we do need to work on it. I did start it, but it fell short, so I apologize. Mr. and Mrs. Robinson, Mr. Owens. And, yeah, for those three people, they talked about the trees causing the issues. That has been a thorn in my side, no pun intended, because the same thing happened to my sidewalks. And I have been complaining about it, but I just decided to just kind of let it go. So I think I've answered all the ones. I know they probably aren't listening. We did get the, the addresses, everyone. I'm really concerned about the damage to the sprinkler systems, because I did say something about that, and that wasn't followed up on, or they kind of put everything back and didn't do anything. But I think that's a good idea, that we will have a meeting with K and D. KD Cement. And we can, I think it'd be a good idea if we had a summary of all the, you know, things that we heard, to present to them. I think that's a good idea. That's all I got. That's all I can remember at this point. Anyone else on council?
I just have a quick question. You referred to a study session on the 6th of February. Are we still going to do that and the town hall meeting?
No, the, the study session, the town hall is taking place of the study session.
Okay, so...
Did I have it on the thing?
No, but Bruce said, we'll discuss it at the 2/6 study session. So I'm like, are we coming at 5 o'clock for that? In my notes, for the back billing, we were going to have that discussion.
Oh, no, no, no. I tried to ask the deadline to be by the, by the next study session.
Oh, which is the town hall?
Right, so basically...
Gotcha.
I, I just knew the study session was that day.
With that date.
It was two weeks, so I said the study session, but...
Gotcha.
I know, I know.
I'm like, oh, we're having a study session, too? Okay, that was my only comment.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, so, so I want to, I want to thank, you know, we had a lot of residents come tonight. I want to thank them for bringing up their issues. You know, unfortunately, progress is messy. You know, these, these projects that we have, you know, it's unfortunate and it's frustrating, but, you know, damage happens. I mean, we've got Lori Kuntz here, whose sprinkler was damaged. You know, and the, you know, replacing the sidewalks damages the grass and so forth. So I appreciate everybody's patience. I know it's frustrating. I do want to assure everybody that we will get all of these things taken care of. There was money in all of these projects to do remediation of things that go wrong. You know, the, the city engineer, you know, does, in some of these projects, you know, review all the work that's done. They're not going to see everything, unfortunately. So we hope that the residents will let us know. We have been encouraging residents throughout the process. There's an email, Sue, what's the, you know, the email address off the top of your head?
CIPprojects@lathirvillage, I think.
Yes, yeah, so CIP projects@lathirvillage.org. So if you do have issues, you know, again, thanks to everybody for bringing their issues tonight. If you do have issues, other issues, email us so that we know of them, and we'll take care of them. As far as the trees go, yes, I echo, you know, your comments. You know, the, it is frustrating that we're responsible for the, for the sidewalks, even when the city trees cause the damage. One of the things that we did do as part of that project is that the city paid for the, the root grinding. So the city did cover some of the costs to help alleviate some of the pain of having to replace those sidewalk blocks. And, and so they, they should stay level. And theoretically, that should, should slow, if not eliminate, them coming back, because the root has been, been cut away. To Mr. Andrews, I think that's how you say his name, you know, who talked about Rainbow Circle and asked me specifically why his road wasn't being done. That's because Rainbow Circle was never on the paving list. If you look at the, you know, you can go to lathirfixlvroads.com, and it shows the map of roads that are eligible. And Rainbow Circle was, was not eligible. It's, it's shown in gray, which was the non-eligible color. The, as I remember it, I think almost all of Rainbow Circle is concrete, and it's very specifically spelled out in the recommendation, all the approved recommendations and everything that, that went along with this project, that we were only doing asphalt roads, not doing concrete. So I'm not sure where the confusion came in. It did look like the map you were holding up might have been the Pazer rating map, which was showing the, the rated condition of the roads, but that wasn't showing which, which roads were eligible. Yeah, and then we also had a resident bring up their asphalt sidewalks. And that was pretty infuriating, because the entire city is being brought up to, up to speed with their, with their sidewalks. There were many things that were said during that, that residence's discussion that was, was inaccurate. There was no process to appeal. That resident brought their concerns to council. Council had no appetite for addressing those, those issues.
Did not.
And then, you know, if, if that resident doesn't like it, they can, they can always appeal to Circuit Court. They made statements about having no idea why their, why their sidewalks were marked in June in this very council. That was brought up, I believe, on multiple occasions, that it was a human error, that it wasn't made in the first markings. So when they went, when, when they went out the second time to verify the markings, they saw that those markings had been missed. And all the asphalt driveways in that situation in the city were marked for the same, same issue. I believe there were 12 of them. So asking for, for, for special consideration is, you know, if we were to grant special consideration for that, we'd have to grant special consideration to all these people who were in here tonight. The roots were brought up by city tree. Well, let's not do that, because, you know, we gave one person special, special treatment. There were no exceptions that were made. The process was adjudicated fairly by the city administration and the city staff. And then the argument about legally non-conforming, and, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, if we're doing a citywide project to bring the entire city up to speed, the, the concept of legally non-conforming, I don't believe exists. I think we had this conversation before.
We, we could have this conversation for a lot longer. But it's also, the ordinance has been in effect a lot longer than the driveway was in existence. So the requirement, you can't be illegally non-conforming... So the requirement, you can't be illegally non-conforming if the ordinance is requiring you to be compliant.
Right. So, so again...
I had two other attorneys that actually presented to this group that said, non-conforming properties do not have to be. And there's nothing about driveway laziness.
They were talking about, they were talking about discount tire, and they weren't talking about your situation. So you can't analogize what they said, that situation to yours. It's different. There was an ordinance in place that required the portion of the sidewalk that transfers across the driveway to be concrete. That ordinance has been on the city books a lot longer than that driveway's ever been there.
Before 19...
I think...
Seventy or something?
I think it was 1972 when that ordinance was originally passed.
It was after, I have it here, actually.
And if the resident feels that they were treated unfairly, they've got Circuit Court that they can go to.
Circuit Court, okay. It didn't come to council. I still have a problem with the driveway flooding, and there's no remedy that I can now do because of what was, how it was done. There was no reason to do it. There was no safety issue. I'm not sure, I never got an answer to why the city administrator had a picture of my driveway from November 2021. So I said, do, how do I go about finding out how my driveway is going to be fixed? Email SIP? And who responds to that?
I responded to that.
No, I know. I said, who responds to SIP? Just so residents know, who responds to those emails?
Staff does.
Are you done with your? I think, is everyone done with their comments? I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved to second half. Very good morning.